Good evening and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors regular session for Thursday, November 29, 2018, 7:30 PM. A reminder that a recording device will be used during this meeting tonight. We're going to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republics which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Township Solicitor Tom Oste for the ordinance amendings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you tonight two ordinances for consideration, and because they are amendments to the zoning ordinance and the subdivision and land development ordinance, you have to have hearings. The first one is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which has been worked on for quite some time. It's as a result of a Vision Partnership Grant with the county, and it amends various sections and clarifies various sections of the zoning ordinance. I have five exhibits. B1 is a proof of publication showing notice of the hearing on October 31 and November 7 of this year published in the Daily Local News. B2 is a letter from the Solicitor to the Chester County Law Library enclosing a copy of the ordinance. B3 is a letter from the Solicitor to the Daily Local News providing the proposed amendment for public inspection. B4 is a copy of a review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission dated September 11, 2018. Exhibit B5 is a copy of the minutes of their East Brandywine Township Planning Commission meeting date of November 7, 2018. And finally, B6 is a notice posted advising of the cancellation of the meeting where these ordinance were originally going to be considered. That meeting was on November 15, but it was canceled because of snow, so we're having that meeting and this hearing tonight. The purpose of the hearing is to provide an opportunity for members of the public and residents to make comments or ask questions about the ordinance, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to ask for any public comment at this time.
Yeah, do we have any public comment? Yes, sir. Yes, if you wouldn't mind, and then if you could state your name and address, street address is enough.
My name is Fisher. F-I-S-H-E-R.
I'm sorry, sir. I just want to make it clear, this is a time for public comment on this proposed ordinance.
For the hearing, we will have a public comment if there's for other, that's fine.
Okay.
I was going to get to that.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Thomas E. Fisher. F-I-S-H-E-R. My mailing address is 115 Colbertson Run Road, Downingtown. The property of interest is owned by my wife, Louise, and in the audience, as well as her sister, Verna. They own 1387 Horseshoe Pike, which is right at the corner of the traffic signal of Little Washington Lindell 322 Road. I would like to raise some comments about Section 399-67A. A, B, like in boy. C, Charlie. D, dog.
Okay.
I realize that most of these issues are by conditional use status. I'm aware of that. My first comment is about paragraph boy. Notwithstanding many other zoning limits, we have an R3 historic Class II status property consisting of three acres, two-story house, five-car garage, and a barn. If you know where I'm at, that's where we are. We have two road frontages, 322 approximately 900 feet long and Little Washington Road, which is approximately 600 feet long. My question about paragraph B, using our property as an example for your response, I would like you to explain, if you can, by our example, how the board would administer to this property. Quote, "Terms of this section shall be limited to one principal use or structure, but may contain more than one principal use on the property," unquote.
So, Tom, I would assume that to be if there was multiple parcels on the property, you could have multiple uses if you had one.
Well, I'm not familiar with this property, but what this provides is that if you have more than one structure on a single property, and it's a Class I and Class II historic resource, then you may be able to have more than one principal use on the property. In other words, one in each structure.
So, let me, I'm involved a great deal with the ordinance task force, and the idea here was to expand the uses permitted in historic structures so that they would be, it would be more economically viable for the owners to maintain the properties.
Agreed.
So, that, I think that, yes, yeah, so that, the intent here was actually to increase the potential uses of historic structures.
Believing that there are lots of strings attached to zoning ordinances, I just want to general, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said maybe, conditional use-wise, we can occupy three structures, taking a gross example. That's what I want to hear. I'm not wanting you to go out on a limb and say, "Well, you can have a barber shop, you can have a plumbing supply, and something else, and a horse establishment in a barn." But as long as you say, either in writing or in a public response, that three of those structures could be considered under conditional use status for each one of those structures. Is that what I just heard?
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, you're, what you're saying is right, in the sense that what we've done is create a process where you would have to come before either this board, or in the case of a special exception, the zoning hearing board, and demonstrate that this was an appropriate use of the property. So, I know that sounds very generalized, but certainly if you came to us and said you wanted a tattoo parlor, we weren't going to look at that the same way as if somebody, a subsequent owner, said, "Well, I'm an accountant, I want to open up my accounting office in this adjacent structure that's part of the property." So, by, when you have a conditional use, that means you have to come back in front of this board, and then this board can look at all of the factors involved and approve that use.
Okay.
Or not approve it.
Right, yeah.
You have to file an application, and a hearing would be conducted, and the board may approve it and may not approve it. It depends on the facts of the case.
Thank you. Paragraph Charlie. R1, R2, R3 permit an inn. Leave, inns leave a bigger footprint in a residential area. This has more of a detrimental issues involved in an inn. Why is bed and breakfast excluded from R1, 2, and 3 districts? Bed and breakfast should help maintain the county experience and perhaps help Class I and Class II status owners, as you just pointed out, hold on to their property since Class I and II have very limiting restrictions. So, my fundamental question is, bed and breakfast are permitted in other areas. Strangely, inns are designated for Class I, II, and III. But why no bed and breakfast? I think that's not, not a good thing, because we don't have envisions of a bed and breakfast currently, but we could, or the future owners could, and that promotes green grass where inns impose traffic and concrete. That's my.
And I would say that, as, I don't recall any specific discussion about bed and breakfast in R1, 2, or 3, but that's certainly something that could be considered at the ordinance task force as an addition to this ordinance.
I would like to formally ask that such consideration be given.
Well, Scott can put that on, he's making a note now, so he'll put that on the agenda for the ordinance task force to discuss.
Okay.
I honestly agree with you. I wouldn't see a big difference between an inn or a bed and breakfast, but.
Don't make any sense to me, that's why I bring it to your attention.
All right, and then you also had a question about D as well, right?
Well, I'm going to, the next one is paragraph A and C. Related to Class I and II has conditional use status, but under, under 399-33, page 4 of 6, subparaphrase B, like in boy, 5, requires special exceptions for bed and breakfast. Does this conflict with anything?
I'm sorry, are you talking about paragraph B as in boy, which is at the bottom of page 4?
Yeah, 399-33, in my copy, it was page 4 of 6, subparaphrase B, like in boy.
33 or 66, 399-66?
No, 399-33, page 4 of 6, paragraph B, like in boy, sub 5. I have it here if you.
In the materials that we have, there doesn't appear to be a 399-33?
And there is a 33A, that's in section 5.
That's not what you're referring to, I don't think.
No. Oh, not for this hearing, though, you're talking about another.
No, Tom, that's an existing, I believe that's the existing ordinance.
Yeah, that's why we don't have it in front of us.
All we have are what the proposed amendments are.
That's why. Let me, let me interrupt you, because as Supervisor Fish was just saying, without us having the forms in front of us to research this, we're not going to be able to give you a clear answer to that question.
That's okay.
So, so if you, anything that's not related to this hearing, if you can put those questions in writing, so at least Scott can look them up and get them to us, so we can have the documentation in front of us. So, so if you have the questions for today's hearing, let's do those ones today, and then the additional questions on the other, we'll go through that route.
Let me restructure my question, so it'll be clearer and I can leave.
Sure.
In the current revision, you have, let's see. Oh, yeah. You have Class I and II as a conditional use. Under this paragraph, bed and breakfast facilities are under a special exception status. Let me show you, and then you can clarify it among yourself. Remember, your bed and breakfast and paragraph D and C are for conditional use. Up here.
Special exception.
This under special exception is required for bed and breakfast. I feel lots of conflict needs to be addressed. I'm not asking for you to address it, just second.
Sure.
It needs to be addressed by this guy.
We don't have that much difference on that.
That might, that concludes my comments about Section 399.
Great.
So, if there are no further comments, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the zoning ordinance amendment as summarized.
I'll make a motion when we adopt ordinance 05 of 2018.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, sir, Mr. Fisher, obviously, we'll talk about adding your addendum. Okay. Okay, now we're going to go on to.
The second hearing is a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 300 and also the subdivision and land development ordinance. Again, these are amendments that have been considered for quite some time under the Vision Partnership Program with the Chester County Planning Commission. I have six exhibits. B1 is the proof of publication. B2 is a letter from the Solicitor to the Chester County Law Library enclosing the proposed ordinance. B3 is a letter from the Solicitor to the Daily Local News enclosing the proposed ordinance. B4 is a letter from the Chester County Planning Commission reviewing the proposed ordinance. B5 is a copy of the East Brandywine Township Planning Commission minutes of their meeting on November 7, 2018. B6 is again the copy of the notice that was posted on the door canceling the November 15 meeting and rescheduling the hearing and meeting for tonight, November 29. Again, it would be appropriate to ask for any public comment, if any.
Yes, Mr. Fisher.
I'm Thomas Fisher, 115 Colbertson Run Road. My wife and sister-in-law have ownership of 1387 Horseshoe Pike. As it relates to Section 300, I have not researched that at all, but one caught my eye, which I would have to ask myself, how in the hell does this ordinance affect me? And I'll read this. "To require sidewalks for all residential and commercial uses and within 1,000 feet of certain uses." And that goes on. All I really want to know is, how, how does this affect my 900 feet on 322?
You're going to have to do a walkway?
And 700 feet on Little Washington Road.
Is that, is that what you're referring to? Would you have to do a walkway?
Well, I just see, "To require sidewalks for all residential within 1,000 feet of something." I didn't research what something is, but all I'm really asking is, if it doesn't, if it doesn't affect us, I'll roll over and go back to sleep. That's all. Thank you.
I think it would only affect your property, this is, this is part of the subdivision and land development. So, if the property was being redeveloped, it might affect you. If it's not redeveloped, it would not affect you.
Correct.
I'll go back to sleep now.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, because we are in a little bit of a time restraint tonight, I'm going to hold off on public comment for just a minute, and I'm going to try to move our, our subdivision and zoning application for the Setlocks.
We haven't finalized this.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, as Chairman, as Supervisor Fish has reminded me, we didn't finalize the ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the amendments to Chapters 300 and 350 of the East Brandywine Township Code, the SALDO amendments.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, now we're going to move on, we will come back to public comment, but we're going to move on to the Setlocks subdivision and zoning application, just because of the time restraint that the party has. So, are they, okay.
Good evening, thank you. Paul Setlock, 111 East Buck Road, Downingtown. Thank you for the opportunity to consider my application.
Let me get to you, because. So, give me a quick rundown. I know some of the details, but not all of them.
Well, I have a lot of, a non-conforming lot on the opposite side of the street from my, my primary residence lot, and there are two deeds, and I would love to build a garage over there, because I'm tinkerer, I work on my own vehicles, and it would be great to have a place to do that work instead of my driveway. And, you know, when inclement weather comes, I've got to, when I can do a job, I get all the tools out, and then it's in and out of the house to get the tools, and then if the rain comes, I've got to clear everything away and stop, because they'll just end up rusty. I just was hoping to have a place where I could have a bit of a workshop and a place to store my vehicles as well, to keep them out of, out of the weathers also. I also have a pop-up camper that I need to replace the canvas on, because the animal's got a net. And I have a rowboat that my dad bought in 1980 that I restored on a trailer, I'd like to keep that out of the elements also. Basically, increase the quality of my lifestyle with an enclosed shelter, 20 by 40 garage on the opposite side of the street. I have a statement that I signed saying that I would have no intent to use the structure for any use other than personal use. And I also have a statement from the adjacent neighbor on 499 Rock Raymond Road, Bill Deegan, saying that he has no request for any screening and that he endorses my application. If you'd like those, I can hand them to you.
Okay.
This is the first one I mentioned, that's the second.
I think I have.
Those were requested by the Planning Commission.
They were, they were.
Excuse me.
And I'm an outdoorsman, and I hit my house with wood, and it'd be great to have the storage area that's not in the house. Room that I've claimed, my wife would like to reclaim, essentially. Get your stuff out, you know, so.
And if I may, zoning hearing board Solicitor Eric Brown had contacted me Tuesday about the, what he called alienation of this lot, since the proposal is for the principal use being a garage, which is not one of the reasons that Mr. Setlock needs the relief from the zoning ordinance. And I've spoken to Mr. Setlock, and he is agreeable to putting that into writing in a memorandum of zoning hearing board decision that the two parcels would have to be sold together, so that they wouldn't be alienated.
And you saw, you saw the recommendations from the Planning Commission, and you were acceptable to all those as well?
Indeed, yes.
Okay, I, myself, don't have a problem with it. Again, you've, you've shown from your neighbors that there's no issue there as well. You know, you guys have anything?
I don't have any issue with it, subject to.
Right, the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission's recommendations and tying the two properties together with a memorandum. So, I'd make a motion that we recommend to the zoning hearing board that the relief be granted, subject to the following items, that the applicant demonstrate that he complies with the 50-foot front yard setback, I think that is, or obtain relief from that. One driveway you didn't comment on, that the Planning Commission clearly.
Oh, I agree to still one driveway, absolutely.
So, that it be one driveway.
Nice impervious surface.
Two garage doors are fine, that there be a statement indicating or a memorandum indicating that the property is not going to be sold without the, the other parcel across the street, and it would only be used for personal use, not commercial use. I think you address.
Get rid of your tattoo parlor you were thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Seems to be a popular commercial use tonight. The screening issue, I think you dealt with, and you got the applicant's support letter, so, and then, of course, you'd have to do any stormwater and other ordinance requirements.
Sure. Whatever, whatever it takes. It's a bit of a dream since I moved into the township to have a garage over there, and because it's a lot that I really can't do anything with, and to use it would be, would be wonderful.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Let us know how the tinkering works out in improving your lifestyle.
Hey, if you need a break job, come on over.
Okay, now we're going to bounce back to public comment for non-agenda items, and I want to remind everybody the rules of conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless, shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Any public comment for non-agenda items?
Ian Plain, when I great lurk drive, I just wanted to publicly thank the chief and the officers for taking care of my property while I was away. From what I've heard from the neighbors, they're very diligent there every day. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
The rules. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Jan Bednarzick. I live in Morgantown. I've had the privilege of working for the East Brandywine Township Municipal Authority since 2004. Prior to that, I was the Secretary Treasurer and Municipal Authority Secretary for Wallace Township for nearly 31 years. And one of my former supervisors had a saying, "Silence is acceptance." And while I prefer to keep my head down, my mouth shut, and just do my work, I'm here tonight because I can no longer remain silent about what I think of this strategic assessment review. And I don't accept how township staff was portrayed in this review. My comments tonight are directed towards Supervisors Scribner and Winters, because they voted to engage the Strategy Group and Halverson Associates to conduct this study. This report is supposed to be a five-year game plan for the township, but it falls far short of that, especially considering the $60,000 price tag. Once you remove the police and fire department reports, the list of persons interviewed, and the pages of critical quotes, you're left with a few bullet point sentences and recommendations, many of which are repeated multiple times, perhaps to add more pages to justify the cost. The most professional piece in this report was written by Chief Cozy. The consultants didn't even include their address and phone number on the report. Are they unwilling to answer questions from the public after getting $60,000 of the public's money? The initial announcement on the township website said that the intent of this study was to provide an unbiased overview of a full range of external and internal aspects of the township. How can this study be regarded as unbiased when you consider some of the members of the focus group? For example, one person is a member of a supervisor's immediate family. Another member of the focus group is a felon who was guilty of fraud and forgery. This is especially ironic, considering that ethics is repeatedly mentioned in the report, and one of the recommendations is to prohibit anyone with a criminal record from serving on any township board or commission. The only truly candid and unbiased comments about this report came from Margie Swartz, the woman from West Goshen Township, who attended the October 18th meeting to express her concerns about the validity of several unidentified quotes in the report. She said that she was surprised that Mr. Halverson was a consultant for the report when he had not prepared a five-year plan while serving for two decades as a West Goshen Township supervisor. She also said that her observations of the work by township staff led her to conclude that township residents were really lucky to have such dedicated and hard-working employees. I attended the town hall meeting on June 18th and immediately saw the direction this assessment was going to take. You'll recall that Mr. Pomerantz divided the audience into several small groups to answer a series of questions about what they perceived to be positive and negative aspects of the township. Mr. Pomerantz then went around the room with microphone in hand to get the responses from a leader for each group. When Sandy Lammy and Jim Boxala gave responses as the respective point persons for their groups, Mr. Pomerantz said, "That's your opinion. What does the group say?" None of the other group leaders were treated that way. Was he so dismissive because the interviews of board and commission members was completed, and he already knew that Sandy was chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board, and Jim was chairman of the Historical Commission and vice-chairman of the Planning Commission? By hiding behind the assurance that everything you say will be treated totally confidential, there's no way to know whether any of the alleged comments were ever spoken. The report mentions the need for transparency numerous times, and yet this report is the absolute opposite of transparency. It's a report full of innuendo, hearsay, negative comments, and findings and observations that have no credibility, as the public can't determine who made the statements or provided the information given in the report. When the identities of the people providing information from this report are kept secret from the public, it's easy to use comments or opinions that wouldn't stand up in the light of day if the person making them had to justify what they said. Why was it necessary for comments purportedly made by other township managers to be kept confidential? Were they afraid of retribution for saying they recommend the use of some financial software other than QuickBooks? In the introduction, the consultants mentioned the high-tension atmospherics and the misperceived real person of the initiative having to do with the future employment of the individuals within township management. If that was not the real intent, then why are individual employees identified by name and described in such negative terms as inept, amateurish, snarky, sullen, unfriendly, and so on? It's noteworthy, and not in a good way.
Can you repeat that last sentence?
I said, "If that was not the real intent, then why are individual employees identified by name?"
Was there individual employees identified by name being under those comments? I don't recall.
Yes.
Yes.
Individuals' names?
Yes.
Okay, I don't recall the names being in there.
They were. It's noteworthy and not in a good way that there are very few examples of positive comments about current township staff quoted in this report. Does this imbalance accurately reflect the ratio of positive to negative comments made by those interviewed? Unfortunately, the public will never know because of the secrecy surrounding the information gathered for this report. I think it's also important to add that just because a resident doesn't like or get the answer that they want, that doesn't mean that staff is rude or unfriendly. I personally took a phone call from a resident who once threatened to throw his trash in the front yard of the township building because the hauler didn't pick it up. This is just one example of what staff handles on a daily basis, as well as dealing with people trying to involve the township in issues that are clearly civil matters, or someone with an axe to grind over getting caught doing a building project without first obtaining a permit. There was almost no acknowledgement of the fact that staff frequently comes in early and stays late, or that they give of their free time to participate in community day, recycling and shredder events, and other activities on behalf of and for the benefit of the township. There was also no mention of the incredibly dedicated board and commission members who freely, who give freely of their time, talent, and expertise throughout the year to provide a wide variety of recreational activities for all ages, to protect and restore historic property, to guide planning and development, oversee sewage management, and so on. And why is serving on multiple committees viewed as a bad thing? Is it wrong or even possible to volunteer too much? The assessment also cited, and I quote, "communication, communication, communication," as the biggest challenge in dealing with growth and increased demands. And yet there was no acknowledgement of the fact that East Brandywine Township has won 13 communication awards from the State Association of Township Supervisors, including first place this year for the newsletter, and three awards in 2016 for the newsletter and website, and for outstanding citizen communication. It was mentioned at the October meeting that Mr. Halverson and Mr. Pomerantz had a combined 50 years' experience in municipal government that qualified them to do this report. While I have nearly 40 years' experience in municipal government, but that alone doesn't automatically qualify me to undertake such a study as this. Having said that, I believe I could have delivered a much better final product than the consultants did, and for far less than $60,000. It was also mentioned that the township could recoup that money within the first six months. But recouping money ill-spent is not the same as recouping money well-spent. It's ironic that the consultants recommended a formal request for proposal review process when in fact no formal RFP was conducted by the board for this study. I happen to be here to take the minutes of the annual reorganization meeting in January, when nominations were made to appoint new consultants. Supervisor Fisher voiced his objection to changing consultants without following the normal protocol of issuing an RFP and giving all three board members an opportunity to participate in the interview process. His objection was outvoted. At the board's regular session on February 1st, when a motion was made to hire the Strategy Group and Halverson Associates to perform the five-year plan, Supervisor Fisher again indicated that the RFP process should be followed, and noted that funding had not been allocated in the budget for it. Once again, he was outvoted. I've experienced this kind of adversarial work environment before, but what's happening right now in East Brandywine Township is far worse. It's time to move forward and start showing some support, appreciation, and trust in your staff, and openly communicating with them to work together toward doing what is best for all citizens of East Brandywine Township. I also encourage the public to speak up and show their support and appreciation for the work being done on their behalf by a truly dedicated, knowledgeable, and cohesive team of employees and volunteers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment for non-agenda items?
Ian Plain again, I would just like to add to that. I think, and a lot of people I've spoken to in the township don't believe that that report has any credibility at all, the way it was, the people were appointed. I had a boss who once talked about using research like a drunk uses a lamppost for support rather than illumination. And I think that's what you did. You went out and found people who gave you back what you wanted to hear. That's my comment.
I disagree with that, but I would also-
It's pretty clear that's-
I would also tell you, I've gotten plenty of emails commending us for the job that the study was done, because no one's ever done a study. So, but again, everybody's entitled to their opinions. Thank you. Any other public comment for non-agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the minutes of previous meetings. We'll start with the Board of Supervisors Special Joint Meeting for October 16, 2018.
Motion that they be approved as amended?
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the Board of Supervisors, November 1st, 2018.
Motion that they be approved as submitted?
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the Planning Commission, October 3rd, 2018.
Motion that they be approved as submitted?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Treasurer's Report.
Thank you. Bank account balances as of November 29th, 2018 are as follows. General funds checking, $1,599,364.21. General fund investment, $564,830.25. State fund bank accounts, $165,802.16. Referendum open space, $2329,164.3. Open space, $791,365.25. Traffic impact fund, $1615,434.10. And there are a total of 154 checks in need of approval for the general fund, one for the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund, or six for the state fund, one for open space referendum, and one for open space.
Thank you.
Let's take a minute and check on the finances to see that they're in order. I'll make a motion that the disbursements be approved as requested.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll go on to Township Manager's Report.
Thank you. Excuse me. NVR Incorporated has submitted a significant land development plan for the Weaver Tract. It's a 126.75-acre parcel that's located behind our municipal complex between Ballinger Road and East Reeseville Road. I'm sorry, Ballinger Road, yes, Ballinger Road and East Reeseville Road, what am I saying? They're gonna create an age-qualified active adult community, also known as a 55-plus community. Plan proposes a total of 294 dwelling units comprised of 162 single-family dwellings and 132 carriage-style townhomes, community center, and related recreational amenities, including approximately a mile of walking trail. Township staff and consultants have been meeting with NVR representatives since August of 2016 to discuss this project. And also, we've created an ordinance amendment to create an overlay district that will allow or authorize this type of community in our land use code. It's not just limited to this parcel. Our Planning Commission will begin their review of these plans at their December 5th public meeting. Our ordinance task force last night reviewed the recent Planning Commission review letter on proposed amendments to the definition of directional signs, increasing the allowable size of signs in our commercial districts to not more than 100 square feet, and allowing the conversion of existing detached accessory structures into accessory dwellings, which still will require special exception granted by the zoning hearing board. I respectfully request the board authorize the legal advertisement to be placed in the daily local news for consideration of these amendments at our December 20th public meeting. If I could get the board-
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And as the holidays are upon us, I'd ask everybody to be more vigilant of their family's safety, particularly the indoor and outdoor holiday displays. Electrical problems cause many fires around Christmas time, including Christmas trees. They're not, the Christmas tree fires are not common, but they do occur. And when they occur-
will be hosting a tree lighting in the community park. Please plan to kick off the holiday season with your friends and East Brandywine neighbors. This will be a fun event filled with game-playing, ornament-making, and caroling. Donations of non-perishable items, including hats, mittens, gloves, and socks, will be welcomed for the Lord's pantry. In exchange for your donation, you will receive tickets for the drawing to flip the switch and turn on the lights at the Beetle Tree. I hope to see you all there. Up at the front here, we have a giant prop, a giant prop check for $10,000. This is a check generously provided to the township from the PICO Green Region Program. Representatives of the East Brandywine Township Open Space and Trails Committee, as well as staff, attended a reception on November 13th. The funding will be used to offset the construction of a trail extension from Phase 2 in the community park to the Hopewell Development, specifically a trail stub that's located at the cul-de-sac of Ferndale. My thanks to PICO for their ongoing support for the township's efforts to preserve land and provide recreation opportunities. This is not the first PICO grant we've received. I'm very grateful for their support. Along the lines of grants, I have an update on the Chester County Multi-Municipal Vision Partnership Program grant. We received this grant to perform a trail pedestrian feasibility study to connect the Struble Trail to Hibernia Park, and it's across three municipalities. That would be Euclid, East, and West Brandywines. East Brandywine Township was the lead municipality, which means that we paid all of the consultant billing until the conclusion of the project, when the plan was accepted by all three municipalities. Total consultant billing was $50,000. We have applied for and received reimbursement from our three partners. $35,000 was received from Chester County Planning Commission, $7,000 was received from West Brandywine Township, and Euclid Township submitted $1,000. The remaining $7,000, or 14% of the total project cost, was our own township's share. This project is now complete. Also on the lines of grants, on November 15th, township staff was notified that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has awarded us a Community Conservation Partnership Program grant, also known as the C2P2 program, in the amount of $165,000. This grant will be a fourth source of funds to construct a second bathroom in the community park, this one on the north end, what's commonly called Phase 1 of the park. The other three sources of funds for that project are the Parks and Recreation Committee's own fundraising efforts, the financial support of the East Brandywine Youth Athletics, and from the developer-funded Fee-in-Lou of Recreation Fund. I think, in this case, I'd like to extend a special thanks to Township Engineer Nate Klein, whose very clutch, meaning he had a short timeline to turn this around, grant-writing skills made this possible. I appreciate that.
Well, before you go too far, Luke needs to be commended for the first two grants in particular, because I believe he wrote both of those. And I know you were instrumental in working with Nate Klein on the C2P2 grant. So, you won't say it, but I will.
Well, thank you. As long as the grant funding I bring in exceeds my salary, I can justify my existence. Page 2 of my report is a solid waste program scheduled for 2019. There is a number of overlapping programs we do for the solid waste program. Particularly, there's the weekly curbside trash and recycling, the monthly bulk pickup. There are four times a year where we do vacuum curbside leaf collection, and I say "we," I really mean Matt and his crew at Public Works. And then also, we have six occasions in the year where we have curbside yard waste collection done by Republic Services. So, this is a calendar that will soon be added to the township website for the public, but in the meantime, you can use this to post on your refrigerator and answer any questions you might get from residents on when trash day is following a holiday. And lastly, this evening, this morning, at their November meeting, the Bonsville Mill Committee asked staff if we would relay a request from them to host a holiday lunch for the construction crew of the Bonsville Mill Park Committee. These are the individuals who can be found every Monday morning working to stabilize the historic structures or build and maintain the trails that can be found at the Bonsville Mill Historic Park and Nature Trails. At this time, I would respectfully ask that the Board of Supervisors authorize township staff to make payment for a holiday lunch for the Bonsville Mill Park Construction Crew to be hosted at the Beaver Creek Tavern in an amount not to exceed $300.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have one question, Luke.
Yes.
Is this going to be posted on the website just the way you have it here, or just in our regular calendar?
It would be in the calendar module of the website.
Well, I think, being an old curmudgeon, I love this, would love to have this, and if I didn't have it, I think people should be able to download this right from the website and print it out, so they can post it on their refrigerators as well, because not all of us rely on our handy electronic calendar all the time, so...
Thank you. I will do so.
But thank you. I think this is terrific. Okay. Building Inspector's Report.
Building Inspector's Report.
Get it. Trying to catch your attention. The October Permit Activity Report. Total building permits issued, 28. Three zoning permits were issued. 27 use-and-occupancy permits issued. 181 inspections were completed, four failed inspections. Total fees collected by the Building Department for the month, $29,346 even. Respectfully submitted, Niran King, Building and Code Secretary.
Thank you. Roadmaster's Report.
Thank you. The only item I have is, Luke had mentioned earlier, about leaf collection. We were, we've collected leaves all this week, and it will continue probably until the middle of next week. The residents of East Brandywine have been very busy, so we're going, we have a lot of work to do ahead of us.
Thank you. East Brandywine Police Department Report.
Good evening. Monthly report for 2018, October. We had 2,492 incidents recorded. We completed 221 investigations. The department had three criminal arrests, one summary arrests, four warrant arrests. We had no juvenile petitions for the month of October. We investigated 11 traffic accidents, issued 149 traffic citations, 33 traffic warnings, and officers logged 7,496 miles of patrol. Training completed for the month. Officer John Hayes completed situational awareness training. Officer John Hayes and Officer Maureen Ray completed field sobriety training, and the entire police department has started its biannual bias-based policing training. You have copies of all the reports. I'd just like to add one comment. You may remember, two years ago, we started a tradition with having the children at Brandywine Wallace make decorations for our township Christmas tree in the building lobby. This year, we thought we'd change it up a little bit, and in addition to having the children make those decorations, we wanted to include all of the children in the township that may not attend Brandywine Wallace. So, we're inviting all the children in the township who would like to come Wednesday night, December 12th, to join the police officers at the station for some milk and cookies and to bring a handmade, small handmade decoration.
Chief, I think it's important, drop off, what time is pickup?
Five to seven.
So the kids drop off at 5:00 and get picked up?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can go to Christmas shopping, yeah. With Tom Maureen at, will you please? This will be between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., but we're asking you to come join us for some milk and cookies and put your decoration on the township Christmas tree in the lobby. That's all I have.
Thank you. And the East Brandywine Fire Department Report.
Good evening. Just to clarify, I'm not sitting up front tonight because I'm covering for the chief. In case we have to call, I'm going to have to sneak out the back, so I didn't want you to think there was any other issue going on there. The monthly report for October. We had 85 total incidents, 36 fire, 49 medical, 13 fire calls in East Brandywine, and 16 medical calls. We used 177 gallons of East Brandywine fuel. We had an average personnel of 10 responding per call. We had three training sessions with an average of 21 people in attendance, which is just phenomenal. To my right tonight, I wanted to show the Board of Supervisors and our guests this new AED. The fire company recently purchased nine of these AEDs. And while you say to me, Joe, what is the significance of that, this AED is state-of-the-art. It's called a cardiac science G5. What is important about it is, is that from the time I turn this on to the time it's ready to deliver a shock is three seconds. It also recognizes that someone who is as big as me, or as skinny as Ms. Slade, it averages your body mass and shocks you accordingly. So, you're delivering the right amount of shock to the patient. The biggest thing, though, is that each one of our vehicles now has this in it, all the fire trucks, the chief's cars, and it's just a better type of AED for the community, the police department, and the fire service. So I wanted to show that to you folks. Continuing on with the report, Scott alluded to the Christmas trees, but it's just not the Christmas trees at this time of the year. We've had two house fires so far. One was the wood burning stove started in the basement. The second was ash that was put on the back deck. Please, please, check your chimneys, your wood stoves, and be careful when putting out the ash, because you can start a house fire. An update on our new trucks. The engine is completed, been put, put the equipment on up at Glick. As soon as the engine comes to the station, the ladder truck will be going up to Glick to have all the equipment placed on that. You may have noticed the ladder truck throughout the area. The ladder truck's been out with all the drivers, learning how to use it, learning what the ladder itself can do, so that's why you may see that around town. On December 8th will be the Fire Company Breakfast with Santa Claus. That is already sold out. It's a huge event. Brings me to the next thing, which I mentioned to one of the supervisors. With the fire trucks at the station, the growth of the fire station, we are going to have to take the back wall of the station out and build a room. I've had the building inspector come down and take a look at it. I'm in the process of filing the building permits, and I don't know if there's any avenue. It looks like we're going to be about $800 to $1,000 worth of building permits. If there's an avenue for us to be able to waive those fees, not waive those fees, I want you guys to take a look at the plan, see what you think, and guide me on that, because it kind of seems we are up here asking for money from you guys, and then we turn around and give you $1,000 back. So, I mean, I don't know what that process would be, but I just wanted to throw it out there.
Well, while you brought that up, I know we've made exceptions for, not for building permits, but for other issues, and I'm in agreement with you that the fire department, in my opinion, for what's going on at that location, they should not be paying building permit fees, but I'm happy to discuss it with the Board.
We've done that before for the fire company.
That's been our practice. Yeah. So, for this instance, I don't see a reason why you should be paying.
Okay. We'll still file the paperwork, but then you tell me how to deal with the fee part of that. And lastly, I know it's a long report tonight, but it's all over the media, it's all over your township, you know, mailers, it'll be all over your township, stuff from Harrisburg, but the Senate Subcommittee released SR 60. It's a report that 18 senators got together with various members of the fire community, paid and volunteered to talk about the fire service in the state of Pennsylvania. Highlights of it, the fire service is in a crisis. You guys have heard it from us, you've heard it from everybody involved here, this just highlights it. 300,000 firemen in 1970s, 30,000 today in the state of Pennsylvania. 2,462 fire companies, 90% completely volunteer. If the volunteer service goes out, they're projecting a cost of $10 billion to the taxpayers of Pennsylvania. They have a whole slew of initiatives in here of how to keep it. They have a whole slew of recommendations. I printed out three copies. I know the President emailed them to each of your emails. I thought I would make it easier. If you don't do anything other than just browse through it, I'd appreciate it, but it is Senate Resolution 6 that these guys spent a ton of time on throughout the Commonwealth looking at. So, I'll give these guys to you, and that'll be the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Old business, I don't believe, do we have any old business?
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we do. So we're going to move on to new. The 2019 preliminary budget for public review. Luke?
Yeah, that is me, and that's, I think, the real reason why you so courteously let some people jump ahead on the agenda. I won't try to take too long. This is the second time you've seen a draft budget for the township. The first was at your working meeting in early November. What's before you tonight is the second-class township-required preliminary budget that is, as amended at your discretion, needs to be adopted 20 days and made available to the public before you adopt a final budget. That final budget is due on December 31st. So, unlike last time, there is an action item with the agenda tonight. At our last meeting, I asked if you wanted me to do a full-on PowerPoint on this, and I think the consensus of the Board was just hit the highlights, so I'm going to endeavor to do that. Feel free to interrupt if I'm getting too long-winded. I'd like to start with a summary of structural changes, so this would be changes to the physical arrangement of the document in front of you. Most fundamentally, there is a new line item. We've begun budgeting the transfers to the capital reserves. Previously, transfers to the capital reserve were done only by the surplus of revenues over expenditures at the end of the year. It has the net effect of guaranteeing that the difference between revenues and expenditures is going to be $0.00, because that transfer equals the net difference. There is, we've added more detailed line items to what was a previously generic general operating supplies line item. Examples of the new line items include computer hardware and software, postage, newsletter expenses, and staff memorials, or memorials in general, and staff/volunteer appreciation now have their own line items. We have consolidated revenues from reimbursable consultant billing, which comes from either developer agreements, subdivision and land development review escrows, or stormwater management review escrows, into a single revenue line item. We have split the engineering consulting into reimbursable and non-reimbursable line items, and this is in line with what we did at the beginning of 2018 for legal expenses, and I think that that has been a very useful way to conceptualize... Most fundamentally, there is a new line item. We've, we've begun budgeting the transfers to the capital reserves. Previously, transfers to the capital reserve were done only by the surplus of revenues over expenditures at the end of the year. It has the net effect of guaranteeing that the, the, the difference between revenues and expenditures is going to be $0.00 because that transfer equals the net difference. There is, we've added more detailed line items to what was a previously generic general operating supplies line item. Examples of the new line items include computer hardware and software, postage, newsletter expenses, and staff memorials, or, or memorials in general, and staff slash volunteer appreciation now have their own line items. We have consolidated revenues from reimbursable consultant billing, which comes from either developer agreements, subdivision and land development review escrows, or stormwater management review escrows into a single revenue line item. We have split the engineering consulting into reimbursable and non-reimbursable line items, and this is in line with what we did at the beginning of 2018 for legal expenses. And I think that that has been a very useful way to conceptualize our consultant billing, is separating the reimbursable and non-reimbursable portions. Also, a significant change is your packet now includes a 39-page budget detail of certain line items. And while it's not every line item in the budget, we have endeavored to provide a detail for those non-self-explanatory line items in the budget. That is, I think, very useful in figuring out what sort of bills are paid out of a given line item. The subcategories now have totals of their own. And many things that had previously been funded through general fund have been moved to the developer-funded Fee in Lieu of Recreation Fund. And that developer-funded Fee in Lieu of Recreation Impact Fund is now included in the, the packet of budgets that you see. It's now an on-budget item. Now, I'm going to proceed to just kind of summarize some revenue changes here. Total revenues are projected at 6.6 million. As I indicated, because of the change that now we transfer to capital, that means that the expenditures are exactly the same. It's a $6.6 million operating budget. No change is recommended to the real estate tax levy, the earned income tax levy, the local services tax, or fees assessed to property owners for trash and recycling. Growth in all revenue categories is expected at about 3%. Staff may recommend a revised fee schedule in 2019, one of the projects we're working on. But these changes are intended to be revenue neutral. You set your fee schedule based on what your expected, what your expected expenses are. So, while that may be something for the board to consider at staff's recommendation later next year, it shouldn't affect the bottom line of the budget. Kind of summarize some of the expenditures here. Estimates for cost of service delivery, our routine activities are based largely on the, the amounts from previous years. There is no new township administration staff in 2019. We have five full-time administration staff and five full-time Public Works employees. The police plan to transition one non-uniformed, part-time to a non-uniformed, full-time, and to stabilize their staffing at 15 full-time and one part-time, uniformed staff. That's an increase of just one, one part-time employee over their staffing at the beginning of the fourth quarter of 2017. Most of the salary adjustments are reflecting a cost of living adjustment of 3%. We have a new health insurance provider for 2019, which is controlling insurance costs, but health insurance costs are expected. And since it is a large category of expenditure, I'm going to, going to hit on that, we still anticipate increases between the two line items we use to pay health insurance of about 4%. We'll be entering the last year of our waste hauler contract in 2019, which means we'll need to have an RFP for a new five-year contract in, in the coming year. I, I'd like the board to be aware that, that staff anticipates a dramatic increase in, in what we will pay for waste hauling due to the collapse of the post-consumer recycle market. Our contract is, it leaves the profit or loss of title to the recycled goods collected at the curbside on the hauler. And, and that's not nearly as lucrative as it used to be, so I expect that to be a very expensive renewal. Okay, so I've, I've talked about structural changes, I've talked about revenues, I've talked about expenditures. Now, I want to hit on one-time things. I could call this category capital improvements, but they're not all capital projects. I'm just going to call it non-routine items. Staff anticipates acquiring new cloud-based software for building permit tracking and for maintaining our GIS inventory. We're planning the, the usual Public Works road resurfacing bid package. We are planning a Public Works garage expansion. On the solid waste side, we anticipate the need for additional recycle toders. These are needed due to the, the very high level of new housing starts. I need to order a truckload of about 700 in January. This expense may be offset by a DEP program grant, which we can apply for and use retroactively. However, we're at a critical shortage of toders, so I can't wait for grant funding. So, that's included in the budget before you. Funds are set aside for a solution to the Hawthorne Drive stormwater retrofit needs. The Public Works Department anticipates needing new zero-turn mowers. The police anticipates continuation of its usual vehicle replacement program, and also new for this year, additional ballistic vests. The Bonneville Mill Committee will continue with the stabilization of buildings, of Buildings A and C, and also for 2019, they are planning removal of concrete, the concrete pad in the front of the building and converting that into gardens. Parks and Recreation will be using grant funding in part, along with other sources, to construct bathrooms, as I discussed earlier tonight. The Trails and Parks and Recreation Committee are working cooperatively for a trail extension between the Hopewell Development and the park, as I discussed earlier this evening. The Trails Committee anticipates improvements to the North Park entrance near the Cross Keys Development and may recommend a share-the-road pavement marking system consistent with our east-west trail plan if the Mapleview Development gets so far ahead that it's possible to connect the dots between the Trails, between the Trails and the Mapleview Development and the park. The Trails Committee is also working on getting engineered plans for the pedestrian bridge and trailhead improvements to the Struble Trail at the Whittaker Memorial Park, and that is also consistent with the east-west trail and facilities plan. The engineering for this is being paid for from general revenue, although half of the cost is being absorbed by Euclid Township. And grant applications for construction are anticipated in the spring for possible 2020 construction. Parks and Recreation posts, plans to host three concerts, three movies, Community Day, a For the Parks Golf Outing, Run for the Parks 5K, a Christmas tree lighting, Shakespeare in the Park, and a Harvest Festival. The Historical Commission will host six history speakers. And the Historic Commission anticipates the purchase of a historic marker at the site of Jim Croce's home. And I, I hope that was the level of detail you were looking for because I'm out of things to summarize. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the preliminary budget before you.
I thought he was going to sing a Jim Croce song or something.
I could do that. He was one of my favorites growing up.
He's still on my playlist. I'm in the mind.
Yeah. He wrote that.
Yeah?
He wrote that, and, what was the one, the one album cover is, is the...
The House.
Facility.
The picture with him in the door, in the frame.
That one. But then, one of the other album covers is the, whatever that thing is in the backyard.
Oh, yeah.
When you get off the Creek Road, go up High Spire, and it's Larry Cross's apartment house on the right before the barn, which is his woodworking shop. Yeah, see? He actually lived over in the park, North Creek Park. If you go up Lindell Road, if you go up the road where you make that hard ninety degree turn, there's a bunch of leaves ahead of you. If you go in there, there's, there are remains of the foundation of what was his house.
Okay, and again, this is preliminary, so I just want to remind everybody, the public will have availability to this as of tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning will be available, also posted on the website.
I would love to hear the public's comment as well, since I, I do hear a lot on other things. My email's always open. So, do you need, do you need anything from us besides?
Need a motion.
Besides motion, do you need anything from us?
It would be a motion to adopt a preliminary budget. And I would also point out that a balanced budget is required, but particularly as it pertains to the, the non-routine items I listed there, most of those are capital purchases, which means that, that staff would be before you later in the year with an RFP or a proposal from co-stars to make a purchase. So, what you're, what you would be making a motion to adopt is a balanced budget, not necessarily authorization to do all the things I listed. But if you're confident that you don't want to do one of the things that I listed, then there's no reason to tie up funds. So, so you just need to think at the level of, of, this is a, this is a plan for the coming year, but, but individual action items will come throughout the year.
That's how it's always, we've always.
Right.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the 2019 preliminary budget as presented.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye. I just want to say that I'm really, I think we need to recognize the amount of work that Luke and the entire Budget Committee have put into this budget because it's a, this is dreary work that most people don't want to do, and I think they need to be commended for it. They've had some very good suggestions, and I'm very pleased with the process.
I agree.
And Luke, especially with the detail forms. We've been trying to do that for a long time, and I, I know when I tried to do it, not on that scale, it was a tremendous amount of work. And I'd just like to, again, thank Luke for doing that because that's, it's been his baby.
And, and Luke, please pass on a thank you to the Budget Committee as well from us.
They've been outstanding to work with, thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to the police lieutenant contract.
You have before you an amendment to the existing contract you have with the police. Among other things, that contract provides for reimbursement if the lieutenant chooses not to take the township medical plan, which the lieutenant has chosen not to take the plan. The cost of his wife's insurance has increased, and therefore, this amendment would increase the monthly amount to $824. We need a motion to approve that First Amendment to the lieutenant's agreement.
I move that we approve the First Amendment to the lieutenant agreement.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now, we're going to go on to the subdivision zoning application for Carlino East Brandywine LP, East Brandywine Center Giant 2018 Review of Plan.
They need to accept that.
I think we're just doing this. I'll make a motion, we accept the extension for considering the application for preliminary slash final approval of the current land development plan by Carlino East Brandywine Associates LP until Monday, December 31st, 2018 at 5:00 PM.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinants and resolutions for consideration were covered under the, will be covered by the township solicitor, and we already...
Already did that.
Yeah, we already did that, I'm just... Public comment on agenda items. Seeing none. I would like to make a note that we will, the board did meet executive session after, held following the November 1st, 2018 meeting to discuss legal personnel issues. Executive session will be held following this evening's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.